Please be seated, the sitting is open.
The Court meets this afternoon to hear Belize, Bolivia, Brazil and Chile on the questions submitted to it by the United Nations General Assembly. Each delegation is kindly asked to respect the 30-minute time allocation for its presentation. This afternoon, the Court will observe a short break after the presentation of Bolivia. I shall now give the floor to the President of Belize, His Excellency Mr Asad Shumman. Your Excellency, you have the floor.
President, Members of the Court. The Palestinian people have an inalienable right to self-determination and complete independence, which has always been systematically denied to them. The League of Nations mandate territories had a right to independence, which was realized for all of them except for Palestine. The UN Charter enshrined the right to self-determination for the protection of all peoples, except in practice for the Palestinians, more than half of whom were massacred or driven off their land in the 1948 Nakba. Their land was partitioned, and half of it allocated to a new state that promptly extended it to 78% by brute force. In 1967, just seven years after Resolution 1514, Israel commenced its still-continuing occupation of the entirety of the remaining Palestinian territory. Since then, Israel has through systematic manipulation of negotiations to undermine the presumed objectives ensured that the Palestinian people are prevented from ever exercising that right. Israel cannot be permitted to continue flouting one of the most fundamental principles of international law with impunity. Impunity breeds inhumanity. The right of the Palestinian people to self-determination is violated in many ways. I will focus on three. First, the exclusion of Palestinians from any part of the Palestinian territory denies their right to territorial integrity, which is an essential part of the right to self-determination. The Palestinian people have a right to self-determination within the entirety of their territory. Yet Israel has systematically removed and excluded Palestinians from parts of the territory. It has separated Gaza from the West Bank and prevented the free movement of Palestinians within the Palestinian territory. It has prohibited the return of Palestinians to their homes and property, and established exclusionary illegal settlements in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem. This is especially egregious because many of these almost 700,000 state-supported settlers are continuously terrorizing and forcibly displacing Palestinians from even more of their territory and engaging in pogroms against them. Second, Israel denies the existence of Palestinians as a people. The Israeli Minister of Finance himself, an illegal settler, has stated that there is no such thing as a Palestinian people. Senior Israeli leaders routinely deny that the Palestinian people have a right to self-determination. Moreover, the case brought by South Africa, which Belize fully supports, lays bare the fact that Israel's genocidal campaign in Gaza also denies the right of Palestinians to exist at all. One key tactic in this regard is Israel's deliberate use of starvation to destroy the civilian population of Gaza. Gaza's entire population of more than 2 million people is in crisis, facing the worst levels of acute food insecurity. By December 2023, the famine threshold had already been exceeded, and the situation was deteriorating rapidly. This famine is not an accident. Indeed, senior Israeli officials have already clearly stated their intent to deprive civilians in Gaza of food and water. In its planned erasure of the Palestinian people, Israel is also destroying Palestinian cultural, educational and historical institutions in Gaza. Almost 400 schools and every single university have been partially or fully destroyed, including one which was used as a base and an interrogation center by Israeli forces for months before they pillaged it and then detonated it. The intention is to erase all trace of Palestinian life and culture, to destroy the very essence of what makes the Palestinians a people. The message is clear: the total culture of Palestine must be destroyed, and they must have no future in Gaza. Third, Israel is using forcible action to deprive the Palestinian people of their right to self-determination, freedom and complete independence. This includes the right of the Palestinian people freely to determine without external interference their political status and to pursue their economic, social and cultural development. Israel's forcible action that denies the right to self-determination consists of institutional, coercive policies and practices that exert authority over and oppress the Palestinian people. These include the complete control exercised over Palestinian natural and economic resources, the institutionalized and racist apartheid, and the systematic and excessive use of force, arbitrary killing and mass incarceration of Palestinians, including children. It also includes action taken by Israel to deny Palestinian political participation by criminalizing political speech and membership of or connection with Palestinian political parties. As the UN rightly says, "By depriving Palestinians of their fundamental rights, Israel has taken away their agency and ability to unite, self-govern and develop as a party." The consequence of this breach is that Israel must immediately, unconditionally and totally withdraw from all of the Palestinian territory. Israel is determined to ensure that the Palestinian people do not now and do not ever exercise their right to self-determination. Israel considers itself an exception. No state reserves to itself the right to systematically violate the rights of people to self-determination, except Israel. No state seeks to justify the indefinite occupation of another's territory, except Israel. No state commits annexation and apartheid with impunity, except it seems Israel. But Israel must not be allowed such blatant impunity. It must not be allowed to continue to inflict scars for generations to come on those that survive this Holocaust. Israel must be made to behave like all civilized nations: stop violating international law and UN resolutions; respect the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. Palestine must be free. I thank you and call on Professor Philippa Webb to continue Belize's submissions.
I thank His Excellency Mr Asad Shumman. I now give the floor to Professor Philippa Webb. You have the floor, Professor.
Thank you. Mr President, Members of the Court. Apartheid is the strongest concentration of racist concepts put into action. It goes hand-in-hand with Israel's violation of the right to self-determination. It is impossible to realize a people's right to self-determination within an institutionalized regime of systematic racial oppression and discrimination. The dehumanizing nature of apartheid suppresses the equality, identity and dignity at the heart of self-determination. The existence of apartheid is relevant to the first question before the Court, which asks about the legal consequences arising from the ongoing violation by Israel of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and from its adoption of related discriminatory legislation and measures. Although the Court can opine on discrimination falling short of apartheid, there are significant and different legal consequences resulting from the breach of the prohibition of apartheid that arises on the facts before the Court. I will address the definition and scope of apartheid, apply the definitional elements to the facts and set out the legal consequences. The Apartheid Convention's definition reflects custom and has the same content as the term apartheid in Article III of SUD. The prohibition of apartheid is not limited to Southern Africa or commissioned by a particular state. The prohibition also applies beyond a state's territory. Article III of SUD refers to territories under a state's jurisdiction, which includes situations of occupation. The SUD Committee has determined that Article III applies to the Palestinian population in Israel and in the occupied Palestinian territory. First, it is indisputable that the Palestinians are a racial group for the purposes of SUD and custom. Under Israeli law, the separate identity of the Jewish race is afforded a privileged status, and the right to exercise self-determination in the state of Israel is exclusive to the Jewish people. Jewish Israelis and Palestinians are perceived by themselves and by external actors as different racial groups. Second, Israel's deployment of a combination of measures across the Palestinian territory and against the Palestinian people falls within Article II of the Apartheid Convention. Israel has longstanding discriminatory laws, policies and practices that affect only Palestinians and are designed to benefit exclusively and maintain the dominance of Israeli Jews on both sides of the Green Line. Moreover, many measures are designed to fragment the Palestinian people as a group and to separate Palestinians from Israeli Jews. This is what Namibia rightly calls strategic fragmentation. Such measures have been set out in Belize's written statement. Here, I emphasize two points. First, in the West Bank, there is the separation wall, restrictive permit requirements, checkpoints and segregated roads. This creates what the Israeli army officially calls sterilization: areas and roads closed to Palestinians. Hebranization, meaning the strategies of repression and segregation, is spreading. Second, Gaza is under siege and blockade. Millions of Palestinians are confined to ever smaller strips of land, the longest and most complete siege of the greatest number in modern history. The whole of Gaza has become an impoverished, desperate ghetto. Since 1967, Israel has detained 1 million Palestinians, including tens of thousands of children. Israel's conduct against the Palestinian people has been characterized as apartheid by UN Special Procedures since 2007, including a joint statement of 47 mandate holders in 2020. Turning to the third element of apartheid: intent. Israel's measures are imposed for the purpose of establishing and maintaining dominance and systematic oppression. This can be inferred from their scale and institutionalized nature and from the differing effects they have on the Palestinian and Israeli peoples as regards access to basic services and rights protection. It is also directly evidenced by Israeli laws that affirm Jewish supremacy as a national value. Intent is heard in the hate speech of Israeli public officials and political and religious leaders. The Court has ordered Israel to take all measures within its power to prevent and punish the direct and public incitement to commit genocide in relation to members of the Palestinian group in Gaza. Intent is also evidenced by Israel's suppression of dissent against the system of apartheid. Indoctrination starts in the classroom. The SUD Committee has expressed concern at the tide of racist hate speech in school curricula and textbooks. The Committee on the Rights of the Child has pointed to the extensive militarization of the educational system, which is entrenched during compulsory military service. Israel's state controller has criticized the government for doing very little to purge the severe phenomena of racism and hatred among youth and to promote a shared society. If the requisite intent is established, any claimed security rationale cannot displace the conclusion that Israel's conduct falls within Article II. In the light of these violations of self-determination and the prohibition of apartheid, Belize requests the Court to formulate precisely what Israel and third states must do. Specific consequences facilitate accountability. Belize refers to the written pleadings that detail such consequences. The core consequence of the violation of the Uskogan's right to self-determination and the prohibition of apartheid is immediate cessation. Israel must dismantle the physical, legal and policy regime of discrimination and oppression, including freeing political prisoners, evacuate Israeli settlers from Palestinian territories, permit Palestinians to return to their country and property and lift the siege and blockade of Gaza. These consequences, taken collectively, mean that Israel must immediately, unconditionally and totally withdraw from the entire Palestinian territory. This legal consequence applies irrespective of the outcome of the Court's consideration of occupation and annexation. Israel must also make full reparation for the damage suffered as a result of its violations. Mr President, Members of the Court, I thank you for your attention. Mr Giratowicz will continue the submissions of Belize.
I thank Professor Webb. I now give the floor to Mr Ben Giratowicz. You have the floor.
President and Members of the Court, I have the honor to address you on issues of occupation, annexation and their consequences. On occupation, Belize makes three points. The first is that Israel is currently occupying all of the Palestinian territory. Secondly, the rules of international law applicable to determine whether the existence of that occupation is lawful are the rules on the use of force, the Usad Bellow. Thirdly, when those rules are applied to this occupation, it is evident that the occupation is neither necessary nor proportionate and is thus unlawful. On the first, Belize will concentrate today on Israel being in occupation of Gaza. That was the case before October last year and remains the case. In July last year, Belize submitted that a state could be in occupation of territory even if it no longer has soldiers in it, if that state could at any time they desired assume physical control of the territory and had the capacity to send troops within a reasonable time to make the authority of the occupying power felt. That was a tragically prescient submission. Israel has since 7 October certainly made its power felt and not just in the form of responding to the attack on it. Its recent conduct is a continuation and intensification of its long-term control over, violence against and incursions into Gaza. Israel controls who and what enters and leaves Gaza, including by air and sea, as well as the supply of water and energy. Gaza is under Israeli occupation and has been since 1967. I turn to the rules applicable to determining whether Israel's ongoing occupation of the Palestinian territory as a whole is lawful. The position of the United States is that the Usad Bellow determines the lawfulness of territory becoming occupied but not of its remaining occupied. On that approach, an occupying power that has lawfully established an occupation would be unrestrained by law as to how long that occupation lasts. It would be restrained by the use in Bellow as to how it conducts the occupation, but it would be under no legal restraint concerning the duration of the occupation. That would of course mean that an occupation could lawfully become indefinite, and that must be incorrect. The correct position is that whether the existence of an occupation is lawful either at the time of its commencement or as it continues is determined by the Usad Bellow. That follows from the fact that an occupation is a use of force. Even if a use of force is initially necessary and proportionate, once either of those two conditions ceases to be met, the continuing use of force will become unlawful. That applies as much to occupations as it does to any other use of force. Applying the rules on the use of force to this case, Israel's occupation of Palestinian territory in June 1967 has been unlawful from its inception. In any event, Israel's occupation is certainly not now necessary or proportionate. If the occupation was ever lawful, it was part of Israel's use of force against Egypt and Jordan in 1967. Israel signed a peace treaty with Egypt in 1979, and so its occupation of Gaza has been unlawful since at least that time. Israel signed a peace treaty with Jordan in 1994, and so its occupation of the West Bank has been unlawful at least since then. Guatemala has nonetheless argued in these proceedings that in light of the events of 7 October, Israel should not be required to cease its presence in Gaza or the West Bank. Concerning the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, on no conceivable basis could it credibly be said that Israel's continuing occupation of the West Bank is a necessary or proportionate response to the recent attack by Hamas from Gaza. Concerning Gaza, Israel's use of overwhelming force, including its ongoing occupation of Gaza, is plainly not a necessary or proportionate response to the October attack. In enforcing its occupation, Israel is committing breaches of international humanitarian law in both Gaza and the West Bank. They are not, however, the breaches that lead to the most important consequences in this case. The fundamental issue from which the most important consequences follow is that it is unlawful for Israel to be exercising any control at all in respect of Palestinian territory. That brings us to annexation. Whether a state has unlawfully annexed territory depends on two things. First, whether the state has physically seized the territory, and second, whether it has an intention to make the territory its own. The requisite intention can be evidenced by a formal declaration of annexation, but it can also exist implicitly if the state has clearly manifested its intention to hold the territory permanently under its dominion. That is what the Court has described as de facto annexation. In one form or another, Israel has annexed all of the Palestinian territory. This is clear from the map you have seen, used by the Prime Minister of Israel before the General Assembly last September, that showed the West Bank and Gaza as part of Israel. For East Jerusalem, the position is the most straightforward since Israel formally annexed it under Israeli law. For the remainder of the West Bank, it is hardly less obvious. Israel has occupied the entirety of the West Bank for 57 years with no plan for withdrawal or acknowledgement of any need or intention to ever withdraw. On the contrary, it has an increasingly active program of settling hundreds of thousands of Israelis in hundreds of settlements in the West Bank. These are permanent settlements on land that Israel is treating as its own. Israeli officials thus speak of all of the West Bank as land over which Israel is sovereign. These statements are matched by Israel's transfer of administrative powers relating to the entirety of the West Bank from its military to its civilian authorities. That is a clear manifestation of the progression from occupation to annexation. All of this is in the context of Israel refusing to recognize the existence of the Palestinian people as a people or their right to self-determination and statehood. These circumstances have led United Nations bodies and special procedures correctly to conclude that Israel is responsible for de facto annexation of the entire West Bank and not only of the part of it that the Oslo Accords label Area C. Area C constitutes more than 60% of the West Bank, and as the Court has seen from the fourth map that Palestine's Foreign Minister displayed, it is clear that Areas A and B comprise a collection of isolated enclaves that are not viable without Area C. Turning to the heart of the questions posed to the Court, which is legal consequences. Israel's occupation and annexation of Palestinian territory are continuing wrongful acts. Israel is thus under an obligation to cease those acts, whether in respect of occupation or annexation. The conduct that constitutes a breach of the prohibition of the use of force is Israel's presence in or exercise of effective control over Palestinian territory. To cease that wrongful conduct, Israel must entirely withdraw from Palestinian territory. That includes withdrawing its civilian population from the West Bank, ceding the construction and expansion of settlements there and dismantling existing settlements. It must also repeal or render ineffective all legislative and regulatory acts, policies and practices that contribute to its exercise of effective control over Palestinian territory. The Court could also usefully indicate that the establishment of settlements has had no legal effect and does not give Israel any rights in respect of the land on which they are located. As to the important question of timing, the Court has previously recognized that the obligation of cessation requires immediate action. In the wall advisory opinion, the Court drew attention to the need for efforts to initiate In the wall advisory opinion, the court drew attention to the need for efforts to initiate negotiations. Israel interprets this to mean that it can remain in Palestinian territory until a negotiated solution to the entire conflict is reached. Belize's written comments are devoted to explaining why that is incorrect. The core difficulty is that Israel is not entitled to remain in breach of peremptory norms pending a negotiated solution. It is therefore crucial that the courts specify that Israel is required to withdraw from the Palestinian territory immediately, unconditionally, and totally. As for states other than Israel, they are under a positive obligation to recognise the illegality of Israel's continued presence in and control over the Palestinian territory. States also have duties not to assist Israel to maintain a situation that is in breach of peremptory norms, and to regulate private actors to ensure that their conduct does not support Israel's illegal practices. Fulfilment of those duties includes weapons and their components not being provided to Israel in the knowledge that they will likely be used to perpetuate its control over Palestinian territory. President and members of the court, thank you for your attention. Those are the submissions of Belize.
I thank the delegation of Belize for its presentation. I invite the next participating delegation, Bolivia, to address the court and invite His Excellency, Mr Roberto Calzadilla Sarmiento, to take the floor. Your Excellency, you have the floor.
Mr. President, members of the court, it's an honour to appear before you on behalf of the blue national state of Bolivia to address an issue of vital importance for the international community. Today, the world looks to this court, the principal judicial body of the United Nations, which is empowered to determine the legal consequences arising from Israel or continued violation of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, from its prolonged acts of occupation, from its continued settlements and annexation of Palestinian territory, including measures which alter the demographic composition, character, and status of the holy city of Jerusalem, and the adoption by Israel of related discriminatory legislation and measures as requested by the General Assembly of the United Nations. Bolivia considers Israel's ongoing illegal occupation to be in violation of international law. In particular, Bolivia considers that this Israel illegal occupation infringes on the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination that violates through its prolonged occupation, settlements, and annexation of the Palestinian territory occupied since nineteen sixty-seven. It violates the fundamental principle of international law prescribing the acquisition of territory by force, and what it violates the international provision of racial discrimination and the establishing of a system of apartheid. Bolivia considers that discriminatory measures of a colonial nature imposed by Israel prior to the legal status of the occupation are aimed at the dispossession of the Palestinian population and to the denial of their rights by altering the demographic composition, character, and status of the city of Jerusalem. The ongoing situation results in consequences and obligations for all states and for the United Nations. Bolivia considers that the court possesses jurisdictions to give the advisory opinion requested by the General Assembly based on the court's own settled jurisprudence. In this context, suffice is to recall that the court confirmed, sorry, in two thousand and four that, I quote, "Whatever its political aspects, the court cannot refuse to admit the legal character of a question which invites it to discharge an essentially judicial task, namely an assessment of the legality of the possible conduct of states with regard to the obligation imposed upon them by international law." Close of brackets. It is in this sense that the court, at the highest instance of international justice, must clarify and affirm the obligation and rights of the states that international norms have established, and that have now been requested in this advisory opinion as a guide for the action and powers of the United Nations, General Assembly, and the states. The right to self-determination is enshrined in Article One, Two of the United Nations Charter. In nineteen ninety-seven, General Assembly Resolution Twenty-Six, Twenty-Five confirmed, as put by this court in two thousand and nineteen, the normative character of its right under customary international law. Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Six, the Friendly Relations Declaration, confirmed that the duty of each state is to refrain from any forcible action which deprives people of the right to self-determination and freedom and independence, and to promote, through joint and separate action, realisation of the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples. The continued siege of Palestinian people through Israel illegal occupation, annexation, and colonisation since nineteen forty-eight has systematically and forcibly discriminated, displaced, and fragmented the Palestinian people by deliberately denying them the recognised inalienable right to self-determination and the right to return to their homeland where the state of Israel is now illegally established. The illegal Israel occupation of the Palestinian territories constitutes a denial of its right, and in this sense, Israel violates the rights enshrined under international law. Almost twenty years ago, in the advisory opinion of the legal consequences of the construction of the wall in the occupied Palestinian territory, this court reminded Israel of its obligations under international law, reaffirming that it was bound to comply with its obligations to respect the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and its obligation under international humanitarian law and international human rights law. Bolivia considers that the General Assembly Resolution Fifteen of August two thousand and four expands on fundamental aspects of this court advisory opinion on the legal consequences of the construction of the wall in the occupied Palestinian territory, including as regards East Jerusalem and its surroundings. Accordingly, they form part of the context to be considered in relation to the legal consequences of Israel policies and practices in the occupied Palestine territory, which we are analysing during this period at the court. Thus, Mr. President, members of the court, Bolivia contains that continuously depriving and denying the Palestinian people's right to self-determination for seventy-five years, Israel is in a clear breach of its international obligations. Mr. President, members of the court, Article Two of the United Nations Charter contains a general rule against the unlawful use of force and states that members shall refrain in their international relations from the threat or use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state or any other manner inconsistent with the purpose of the United Nations. The prohibition of aggression is binding on all states, and it constitutes a parentory norm of international law. On November twenty-two nineteen seventy-six, the Security Council unanimously adopted Resolution Two-Four-Two, in which it insisted of the inadmissibility of their acquisition of territory by war and called for the withdrawal of Israel and armed forces. By the same token, Resolution Two-Five-Two of nineteen sixty-eight, the Security Council reaffirmed the point, considering that all legislative and administrative measures and actions adopted by Israel, including the expropriation of land and property therein, that tend to change the legal status of Jerusalem, are invalid and cannot change the statute. It is imperative to recall that the Security Council urged Israel to scrupulously observe the provision of the Geneva Convention and international law on military occupation, further reiterating that the Geneva Convention of August nineteen forty-nine on the protection of civilians in times of war applied to the Arab territories occupied by Israel since nineteen sixty-seven, including Jerusalem. In particular, Article Forty-nine of the Fourth Geneva Convention protects against colonization of occupied territory by providing that occupying power may not carry out the evacuation or transfer of any part of its own civilian population to the territory occupied by it. Yet, the transfer of seven hundred and fifty thousand Israeli settlers and the building of settlements in the East Jerusalem and the rest of the West Bank have been deliberately carried out with the intention of acquiring the territory through de facto and the jury annexation, including through colonization, confinement, and fragmentation of the occupied Palestinian territories. Not only the Security Council and the Human Rights Council, but also the General Assembly reaffirmed the principle of inadmissibility of the acquisition of territory by force, condemned and rejected Israel measures aimed at altering the demographic composition, the character, and status of Jerusalem in the occupied Palestinian territory. States in their international relations must refrain from restoring to the threat of use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state or coheres, and other states to subordinated in its exercise of its sovereign rights and obtain advantages of any type. Bolivia considers that Israel, colonial settlements in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, the West Bank, the Gaza Strip, and the Syrian Golan, have been built by force through the imposition of institutionalised racially discriminatory regimes, including apartheid, and though the denial of the exercise of the right of self-determination in contravention of international law, as a result, they must be considered illegal. Similarly, Israel occupation results from an act of aggression, and as such, it must be considered illegal under both Jews in Bello and Jews at Bello. The Committee on the Exercise of the Inalienable Right of the Palestinian People in two thousand and twenty-three, study of the legality of the Israel occupation, endorsed the growing body of evidence that Israel, Bellegrand occupation of the Palestinian territory, is illegal insofar as it denies the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, including the right to an independent state of Palestine. The occupying power lacks the right of sovereignty of the occupied territory, as confirmed by the principle of permanent inviolability of the rights of the protected population in the event of annexation, which is enshrined in Article Forty-seven of the Fourth Geneva Convention of nineteen forty-nine. The occupying power cannot alienate the land or the properties of the occupied state. Thus, Bolivia considers that the Israeli colonialist occupations are clearly illegal according to just in Bello, and illegal occupation because there is a violation of the normative order and the legal regime of the occupation such as the principles of temporality, the prohibition of annexation by force, serious violations of human rights and the right to self-determination, inalability of sovereignty, and the prohibition of racial discrimination, apartheid, and, more recently, genocide. Mr. President, members of the court, Bolivia observes with concern that Israel actions of persecution, oppression, and domination of the Palestinian people have been accompanied by systematic violations of fundamental human rights that have been observed by both the Security Council and the Human Rights Council. This includes a system of racial discrimination and a system of apartheid that has not abated despite repeated condemnation from the international community. The Human Rights Council has repeatedly called for an immediate protection of Palestinian civilian in the occupied Palestinian territory in accordance with human rights standards and international humanitarian law. It has further stressed all policies and measures adopted by Israel to limit access Palestinians to their holy sites, in particular in occupied East Jerusalem, on the basis of their national origins, religion, birth, sex, and any other status violates the relevant provisions set forth in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the International Covenant of Civil Rights and Political Human Rights, the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights, and the Fourth Geneva Convention on the Protection of Civilians in Times of War. This measure must cease. Israel is under an obligation to cease its wrongful conduct. The international community has repeatedly condemned Israel's actions, including through the United Nations, insofar as they hinder the exercise of the Palestinian right to self-determination. These have included the construction of illegal settlements in occupied Palestinian territories, the construction of the separation wall in the West Bank, and other measures that affect the daily lives of Palestinians. Bolivia has consistently joined these condemnations. Israel occupation bought in the means and its purpose does not fall within the framework of legality established in international law. The de facto annexation of territory imposes restrictions on where the Palestinians can leave, travel, and as well as a racial discriminatory legal and administrative regime that favours Israel settlers and deprives Palestinians of their most basic rights. The conclusion is unavoidable that Israel has used its prolonged occupation as a pretext to pursue its illegal objective of annexing the occupied Palestinian territories in violation of the Charter of the United Nations. Therefore, the Israel occupation must be considered illegal in its entirety. Mr. President, members of the court, the policies and practice of Israel occupation in Palestinian territory are illegal and have legal consequences with obligation for Israel and for other states and the United Nations since they violate the rights of the Palestinian as people and Palestine as a state, and therefore they both demand the complete and immediate cessation of these international acts. Bolivia considers that Israel, as the state responsible for this violation of international law, must cease the jury and de facto acts and policies that prevent the exercise of its right to self-determination of the Palestinian people and fulfil its obligation to end the situation of illegal occupation and its discriminatory policies and practices designed and maintained to establish dominance in a peaceful, immediate, and unconditional manner. Therefore, Israel is also obliged to stop development of the atrocities of genocide committed more recently in Gaza and to comply with the provision measures set forth in the order of this court in January twenty-six two thousand and twenty-four. Israel must also comply with its international obligations and stop continued Israel settlements activities that are jeopardising the viability of the two-state solution based on the nineteen sixty-seven lines and retract Israel announcement on February last year of a further construction and expansion of settlements and the legalisation of advanced settlements. Israel must cease the armed occupation and cancel the annexation of Palestinian territories and reverse illegal settlements by establishing reparations and compensations. As the occupying power, it must assume responsibility for seventy-six years of occupation and for the siege imposed on the Gaza Strip and the ongoing... and for the siege imposed on the Gaza Strip and the ongoing atrocities of crimes of genocide. Bolivia considers that within the framework of the resolution mentioned in the advisory opinion brief, Israel must immediately and completely put an end of all settlement activities in the occupied territory and reaffirms that the establishment of settlements by Israel in the Palestinian territory occupied since nineteen sixty-seven, including East Jerusalem, has no legal validity and constitutes a manifest violation of international law and a major obstacle to the achievement of the two-state solution and a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace. Mister President, members of the court, the international community has, including through the United Nations, repeatedly condemned and must continue to condemn Israel actions that hinder the exercise of the Palestinian right to self-determination, such as the construction of illegal settlements in occupied Palestinian territories, the construction of the world separation in the West Bank, and the other discriminatory measures that affect the daily lives of Palestinians. In this context, states and international organizations are under an obligation to prevent and take measures and cooperate to prevent Israel from continuing to violate the Palestinian right to self-determination and its discriminatory practices of domination and apartheid, and to avoid any act of support for the genocide of the Palestinian people. These measures may include diplomatic actions, economic sanctions, political pressure, and legal measures. States have the obligation to contribute with separate or joint actions to the state of Palestinian exercise of its right to self-determination. States parties to the Genocide Convention also have clear obligation to act to prevent, suppress, and punish genocide employing all means reasonable, available to them, so as to prevent genocide so far as possible within the limits permitted by international law, also clarified in the two thousand and twenty-four Ukraine-Russia case. The plurinational state of Bolivia considers that the presidential declaration of the Security Council of February twenty-two thousand and twenty-three firmly underlines the need for all parties to comply with their international obligations and commitments. In this sense, states have the obligation not to recognize the illegal situation resulting from the acts of occupation of the territories of Palestine by Israel, the impediment of the right to self-determination of the Palestinian people, the prevention of discrimination, apartheid, and genocide, and avoid any act of complicity and action that contributes to the maintenance of these illegal situations. Bolivia believes that all states must firmly oppose all unilateral measures that impede peace, including, among others, to reframe the arms trade, the construction and expansion of Israel settlements, the confiscation of Palestinian lands, and the legalization of settlements, demolition of Palestinian homes, and the displacement of Palestinian civilians. States have to reject the expansionist and colonialist policies that Israel has been developing for half a century, promoting a system of apartheid and constant suffocation and genocide against the Palestinian people in violation of international law, the Charter of the United Nations, and the respective resolution approved by the Security Council, the Human Rights Council, and the General Assembly. As a pacifist country, the plurinational state considers that the only alternative to guarantee a just and lasting peace in the conflict between Israel and Palestine must be the obligation for all states to contribute to dialogue and negotiation with clear expression of political will from both parties to achieve a two-state solution, consolidating a free, sovereign, and independent Palestinian state as it is established with the pre-nineteen sixty-seven international borders, with East Jerusalem as its capital in accordance with the relevant Security Council and General Assembly resolution. Following the principles of international law and peace, Bolivia recognized Palestine as an independent and sovereign state on the seventeenth of December two thousand and ten along the nineteen sixty-seven border because it meets all the traditional criteria for statehood. All states have common but differentiated responsibilities and the obligations to provide solidarity assistance to the Palestinian people accordingly. And despite its economic limitation, the plurinational state of Bolivia is making an important effort by sending a contingent of humanitarian aid, which we hope can reach its destination without objection from the occupying power. Bolivia further considers that the Security Council, the Human Rights Council, the United Nations General Assembly, and the International Court of Justice, as well as the relevant treaty bodies must continue to call on Israel to comply with its obligations under international law to cease the expansion of illegal settlements and guarantee the full exercise, enjoyment, and respect of the human rights of the Palestinian population. Similarly, the United Nations has the obligation to implement all relevant resolutions and other necessary measures and additional resolutions to bring to an end to Israel's illegal occupation and the present system of racial discrimination and apartheid. Mister President, members of the court, every day we witness atrocities and an increasing irreparable loss of lives of the Palestinian people. The news document daily the suffering. We know not what legal consequences these international crimes may yield as they continue now with standing the order on provisional measures of January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. With its advisory opinion, the court has the power to establish what these consequences are. Mister President, members of the court, that concludes my statement on behalf of the plurinational state of Bolivia. I should like to thank the court its careful attention.
I thank the delegation of Bolivia for its presentation. Before I invite the next delegation to make its oral statement, the court will observe a coffee break for ten minutes. The setting is suspended. Please be seated. This is resumed. I now call upon the delegation of Brazil to address the court and invite Mrs. Maria Clara Paula de Toscu to take the floor.
Mister President, distinguished members of the court, it is an honor for me to speak on behalf of Brazil before the International Court of Justice, the main judicial organ of the United Nations. We are gathered here to fulfill another stage of a mandate conferred upon this court by the United Nations General Assembly on December thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, when Resolution seventy-seven slash two four seven, entitled "Israeli Practices Affecting the Human Rights of the Palestinian People in the Occupied Palestinian Territory, Including East Jerusalem," was adopted. Through that resolution, the General Assembly tasked this court with providing an advisory opinion in response to two main questions, which I quote. First, what are the legal consequences arising from the ongoing violation by Israel of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination from its prolonged occupation, settlement, and annexation of the Palestinian territory occupied since nineteen sixty-seven, including measures aimed at altering the demographic composition, character, and status of the holy city of Jerusalem, and from its adoption of related discriminatory legislation and measures? And second, how do the policies and practices of Israel affect the legal status of the occupation? And what are the legal consequences that arise for all states and the United Nations from this status? Brazil's decision to participate in this proceeding, presenting our written statement, and now speaking at this public hearing, stems from the country's historical commitment to abide by international law, to foster multilateralism, and to promote the peaceful settlement of disputes. This Israeli-Palestinian question has been one of the most pressing unresolved conflicts on the international agenda for decades. Israel's occupation of Palestinian territories, persisting since nineteen sixty-seven in violation of international law and numerous resolutions by the UN General Assembly and the Security Council, cannot be accepted, let alone normalized by the international community. From Brazil's perspective, the current request for an advisory opinion addressed to the highest judicial body in the UN system could not be more timely. Brazil believes that the court's pronouncement is necessary so that not only Israel, as the occupying power, but also all countries seeking to align their conduct within the limits of international law and justice can have clarity on the legal implications of Israel's occupation and its policies and practices in the Palestinian occupied territories. It is not surprising, therefore, that over fifty countries have decided to participate in the proceedings concerning this advisory opinion. Mister President, esteemed judges, the importance of the matter and the gravity of the situation in the Palestinian occupied territories were indisputable even before October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The tragic events of that date and the disproportionate and indiscriminate military operations that followed, however, make it glaringly clear that the mere management of the conflict cannot be considered an option and that a two-state solution with an economically viable Palestinian state living side by side with Israel is the only way to provide peace and security for Israelis and Palestinians. We know that the current request for an advisory opinion has a defined, restricted scope, excluding political considerations as well as the legal definition of the events of October seventh and subsequent military operations. The consequences of these recent events, notwithstanding, intrinsically linked to the Israeli occupation of Palestine, compels Brazil to mention them at this public hearing. I do not intend today to delve into the legal considerations that Brazil presented in its written statement in July two thousand and twenty-three, already well known to this court. At this stage, I would like to highlight only its main points. On the jurisdiction of the court, there seems to be no doubt, according to Article sixty-five, paragraph one of the ICJ's statute, that this court is competent to issue the advisory opinion commissioned by the General Assembly, an equally competent body to request it. The subject of the consultation is intrinsically linked to relevant principles of international law, such as the right to self-determination and the prohibition of the annexation of territory by force, making the opinion of this judicial organ even more crucial for the entire international community. On the people's right to self-determination, the right of peoples to self-determination is enshrined in international law, including in the UN Charter and widely recognized by the United Nations General Assembly. This court and the General Assembly have expressly recognized that the existence of the Palestinian people, as much as their right to self-determination, is indisputable. Brazil would appreciate that the court, within the scope of the present advisory opinion, could highlight the principal position that the Israeli occupation of Palestinian territories violates the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. On occupation, settlements, and annexation. In nineteen sixty-seven, Security Council Resolution two four two emphasized the inadmissibility of acquiring territory by force and directed Israel to withdraw its troops from the then recently occupied Palestinian territory. However, the occupation persists to this day and has been aggravated by the construction of the separation wall in Palestinian territory, the building of illegal settlements in the West Bank, and the annexation of East Jerusalem. As recognized by the court in the wall advisory opinion, Israel has continued to have the status of occupying power. The prolonged occupation, settlement, and annexation of Palestinian territories, including measures aimed at altering the demographic composition, character, and status of these territories, including Jerusalem, violate relevant rules of international law. On the prohibition of discrimination, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, foundational instruments of the international human rights protection system, guarantee the right of all individuals to be treated equally without discrimination based on race, color, gender, or religion, by extending its jurisdiction over the occupied Palestinian territories and establishing two distinct legal systems. One, applied to Israeli settlers, and another imposed under military rule to Palestinians. Israel is practicing discrimination against the Palestinian population while impairing the recognition, enjoyment, or exercise on an equal footing of their human rights and fundamental freedoms. This differential treatment is evident and well documented and should also be addressed by the court. On the legal status of the occupation. On the legal status of the occupation, Brazil expects that the court reaffirms that the Israeli occupation of Palestinian territories is illegal and violates international obligations through a series of actions and omissions by Israel. The confiscation of Palestinian lands, the destruction of Palestinian properties, the construction of Israeli settlements and of the wall, and the adoption of measures aimed at changing the demographic composition of areas within Palestinian territories must all be taken into account by the court. Those persistent practices are tantamount to annexation. On the legal consequences, the practices described above, which have persisted for decades, result in obligations for Israel, the occupying power, and for all other states seeking to conduct themselves in accordance with international law, as follows: For Israel: Cessation and non-repetition. First of all, Israel must put an end to the occupation of Palestine. Its primary obligation is to cease and not repeat the acts and omissions by which it occupies and prolongs the occupation of Palestinian territories. Reparations. Secondly, according to the jurisprudence of this court, a state violating principles and rules of international law must provide due reparations. For other states: Thirdly, the illegality of the situation creates obligations not only on the occupying power but also on all states. Obligation of non-recognition: The main obligation is that all states must abstain not only from formal recognition of the situation but also from acts that could imply such recognition. Obligation of non-assistance: No state should collaborate with Israeli actions or initiatives related to the illegal occupation of Palestinian territories. Obligation of cooperation: Finally, states must cooperate to bring an end through lawful means to the occupation at the earliest. Mr. President, distinguished members of the court, in concluding my statement, I would like to highlight that Brazil is fully committed to complying with these obligations. We have been consistently advocating for a two-state solution, allowing for the creation of an independent, sovereign, and economically viable Palestinian state, coexisting with Israel in peace and security within mutually agreed and internationally recognized borders, which includes the Gaza Strip, the West Bank, and East Jerusalem as its capital. It is not without reason that Brazil, in December 2010, extended recognition to the state of Palestine. It was not without reason either that Brazil enrolled to provide its contributions in the context of the present request for an advisory opinion from the court. By providing its advisory opinion on the legal consequences of Israel’s practices and policies in the occupied Palestinian territories, the court will not only contribute to uphold international law but also to the resolution of one of the most pressing issues on the international peace and security agenda. Brazil strongly believes in dialogue, peace, justice, and multilateralism, and highly values the work of this international court of justice. Thank you.
I thank the delegation of Brazil for its presentation. Let me now call upon the next participating delegation, Chile, to address the court and invite Ms. Jimena Fuentes Torijo to the podium.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the court, it is an honor for me to appear before you as the representative of Chile in these advisory proceedings. The two questions submitted by the General Assembly to the court are of the utmost importance to assist the organs of the United Nations in fulfilling their responsibility under Article 1, Paragraph 1 and 2 of the United Nations Charter, namely, to take effective collective measures for the prevention and removal of threats to the peace, to bring about adjustment or settlement of international disputes, or situations which might lead to a breach of peace, and to develop friendly relations among nations based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, and to take appropriate measures to strengthen universal peace. The situation that affects the occupied Palestinian territory may only find a satisfactorily solution on the basis of compliance with the Charter of the United Nations, international human rights law, and international humanitarian law. The right to self-determination, to which the Palestinian people living in the OPT are entitled, plays a central role in the resolution of this longstanding conflict. It is our position that the court should provide a substantive advisory opinion that may contribute to the strengthening of peaceful relations between Israel and Palestine by clarifying the applicable international law and the legal consequences arising from the violation of those rules. Chile appears today before the court in response to the invitation extended to all member states of the United Nations to furnish information on the questions submitted by the General Assembly. Two main considerations have prompted Chile to participate in these advisory proceedings. First, Chile, as a member of the United Nations, has the responsibility to contribute to strengthening the rule of law in the international community. The questions submitted by the General Assembly touch upon the basic principles of the rule of law, that is to say, the principle of the supremacy of law above the exercise of power, and the principle of accountability. Second, Chile has continuously supported the self-determination of the Palestinian people and the two-state solution. Through decades of participation in the multilateral fora, Chile has consistently called all the parties to comply with their obligations under international law and to put an end to policies and practices that endanger the peace process. All this in a domestic setting where Chile is home to a large Palestinian community, the largest outside the Middle East, and to an important Jewish community, the third in South America. In 2011, the Chilean government, led by former president Sebastián Piñera, recognized the state of Palestine, and in 2012, Chile co-sponsored General Assembly Resolution 67/19, which accorded Palestine non-member observer state status in the United Nations. Chile would like to see the implementation of the two-state solution within internationally recognized and secure boundaries, and it is convinced that these advisory proceedings will assist in that process. Why? Because under the current status quo, there is no solution in sight. An advisory opinion may contribute to the process of changing the status quo, putting an end to the 56-year occupation of Palestinian territory and to the realization of the Palestinian people’s self-determination. In this presentation, Chile will develop three points. First, the absence of compelling reasons to decline rendering the advisory opinion. It is a false dilemma that such opinion may impede negotiations between Israel and Palestine. Second, Chile’s views on question A regarding Israel’s violation of the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and other rules of international law, and the responsibility that arises thereof. Third, Chile’s views on question B regarding the illegal status of the occupation and the consequence that necessarily follows, namely, the obligation to put an end to the Moving to the first point, it is Chile’s position that the court has jurisdiction to give the requested advisory opinion, and that there are no compelling reasons for the court to refuse to do so. As already stated in its written statements, Chile considers that the fact that a legal question may also involve certain political aspects, or the fact that the parties concerned should pursue negotiations, does not bar the court from its jurisdiction. Indeed, complex situations, such as the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, are precisely the ones that can benefit the most from a clarification of the applicable law by this With regard to the principle of judicial propriety, which has been a matter of some debate in these proceedings, Chile underscores the fact that, by their very nature, advisory opinions do not resolve contentious disputes, and does not share the view of a few other states that rendering an advisory opinion in this case would be at odds with the agreed negotiation framework dealing with the ultimate status of the OPT. While it is true that the Security Council has endorsed a political process based on a negotiation framework for the resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, it is also true that the Security Council itself has condemned all measures aimed at altering the demographic composition, character, and status of the Palestinian territory occupied since 1967, including East Jerusalem, including inter alia the construction and expansion of settlements, transfer of Israeli settlers, confiscation of land, demolition of homes, and displacement of Palestinian civilians in violation of international humanitarian law and relevant resolutions. Chile recalls that this court, in the Namibia advisory opinion, was clear in stating that an international instrument, such as a Security Council resolution, has to be interpreted and applied within the framework of the entire legal system prevailing at the time of interpretation. The court has also noted that resolutions of the UN organs need to be analyzed, having regard to the terms of the resolution to be interpreted, the discussions leading to it, and in general, all circumstances that might assist in determining the legal consequences of the resolution of the Security Council. Thus, to argue that Security Council resolutions supporting the need for a negotiated two-state solution impede the exercise of the court’s advisory jurisdiction is simply untenable. Indeed, it is quite clear from the language used by those resolutions and the discussions leading to their adoption that any such negotiated solution precisely requires the cessation and non-recognition of Israel’s illegal activities in the OPT. It is difficult to understand how a legal opinion rendered by this court, the purpose of which is precisely to determine the legal consequences of Israel’s behavior in the OPT, might be an obstacle for a prospective negotiated solution. In addition, one should not lose sight of the fact that ongoing or prospective negotiations do not imply a suspension of the functions and powers of the Security Council or the General Assembly. Indeed, the purpose of the request for an advisory opinion in this case is precisely to assist the General Assembly in the exercise of its functions with regard to the situation in the OPT. It is important to bear in mind that the General Assembly, in exercising its powers, can issue recommendations, the content of which is not restricted to calling the parties to agree on a negotiated solution. In conclusion, Chile strongly supports the view that by giving the requested advisory opinion, the court will be acting within the scope of its advisory function, fulfilling its duty to provide the legal assistance that the General Assembly requires to exercise its power in the context of a longstanding conflict. Mr. President, members of the court, I will now address Chile’s views on question A. In its first written submissions, Chile referred to some of the evidence before the court which demonstrates that Israel’s policies and practices in the OPT, including East Jerusalem and Gaza, amount to serious and reiterated violations of international law, inter alia of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, of the rules and basic principles of international humanitarian law, and of international human rights law, including the prohibition of racial discrimination. Examining these violations is especially relevant in the present context of escalating hostilities. The absurdity of violence in the OPT and in Israel is partly explained by decades of systematic disregard of international law. Less than four months before the Hamas terrorist attacks, former UN Secretary-General Ban Ki-moon and former UN High Commissioner for Human Rights Mary Robinson noted that Israel’s policies, including its attempts to exercise sovereignty over the OPT, risks an uncontrollable explosion of violence on both sides. The statement proved premonitory. Noting that the current escalation of hostilities is partly explained by the status quo does not entail condoning the attacks of Hamas. Chile unequivocally condemns terrorist actions and has called for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages since day one. However, as noted by the UN Secretary-General, the escalation does not come in a vacuum, but grows out of a longstanding conflict with a 56-year-long occupation and no political end in sight. This further confirms the importance of determining the legal consequences arising from the ongoing arising from the ongoing violations of international law. As Chile explained in its first written submission, there is vast evidence demonstrating the existence of serious violations of international law by Israel. Although Chile agrees with other states in noting that the court does not need to make detailed findings on every incident mentioned throughout the submissions and in the more than 1,800 documents contained in the dossier filed by the Secretary-General, I would like to point to certain particularly serious violations which the court should address in its advisory opinion. First, Israel has violated and continues to violate human rights law, including the denial of the Palestinian people's self-determination, a norm of U.S. Cogan's nature. The evidence is clear, including the establishment and expansion of settlements, the confiscation of Palestinian land, an arbitrary demolition of Palestinian houses, and the unwillingness and inability of Israeli authorities and officials to protect the Palestinian population from violence in breach of Israel's obligations as an occupying power. The Human Rights Committee, the views of which have been given significant weight by the court in the past, regretted that Palestinians have been systematically deprived of their land and housing rights for decades, expressed concern for the systematic practice of demolitions and forced evictions based on discriminatory policies, and noted that such practices led to the separation of Jewish and Palestinian communities in the occupied Palestinian territory, which amounts to racial segregation. These violations have worsened after the October 7 attacks. Israeli human rights NGO Jesh Dinh has noted that 2023 was the most violent year in settler violence against Palestinians in the West Bank, in both the number of incidents and the severity, and that the first two months after October 7 were particularly violent. Similar findings were made by Israeli NGO Beis Salam, Human Rights Watch, and the UN Office for the Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs. The Office of the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights has also noted the rapid deterioration of the human rights situation in the West Bank and East Jerusalem after October 7, including unnecessary and disproportionate use of force resulting in unlawful killing, mass arbitrary arrests, detentions, and ill treatment, and further rise in settler violence already at record-high levels. In parallel, high-ranking Israeli authorities have expressed that they have no intent to guarantee the Palestinian people's right to self-determination in Gaza by stating that, and I quote, "The state of Israel will no longer be able to accept the existence of an independent entity in Gaza", end of quote, and by calling for the resettlement of the strip. Israel has not only violated the Palestinian people's right to self-determination, but also other rules of international law, including the use at Belum by its de jure and de facto annexation of Palestinian territory. As developed in more detail in Chile's written submissions and as eloquently put by former Special Rapporteur Link, the inexorable Israeli occupation has become indistinguishable from annexation. Chile agrees with the views of most participants in these proceedings in noting that Israel neither regards itself nor behaves as a temporary occupant of the OPT and that its practices and policies are inconsistent with a temporary administration of occupied territory. Israel's policies and practices in the OPT also amount to serious violations of Israel's obligations under international humanitarian law, including the prohibition of transferring civilian population into the occupied territory, which also amounts to a war crime and under the rules of international human rights law that forbid racial discrimination. This latter point has been repeatedly noted by authorities including the Secretary-General, the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights, special rapporteurs, among others. In his 2023 report to the Human Rights Council, the High Commissioner documented patterns of systematic discrimination in law, policy and practice encompassing almost every sphere of life, in particular housing, land, and property rights, and the right to life, security of person, and access to justice. Already in 2019, the words of Prime Minister Netanyahu were crystal clearly clear on this point, and I quote, "Israel is not a state of all its citizens. Israel is the nation-state of the Jewish people and only it", end of quote. Before moving to question B, I want to note one additional feature of the above-mentioned violations. Israel has incurred them in blatant disregard of repeated admonitions by the Security Council, the General Assembly, the Human Rights Council, and the court itself. Furthermore, as noted in February 2023 by the president of the Security Council, it is clear that Israel's practices actually ran contrary to the possibility of reaching a two-state solution and a sustainable peace in the region. These violations, among others, detailed in Chile's written statements, trigger Israel's international responsibility. Thus, Israel is under the obligation to cease these violations, make full reparations, and offer appropriate assurances and guarantees of non-repetition. These violations also impose on other states various related obligations, including the obligation to cooperate to bring this situation to an end. Through lawful means, Chile is precisely cooperating to bring this situation to an end by participating in these advisory proceedings and by its joint submission with Mexico of a referral to the International Criminal Court on the situation in Palestine. Mr. President, I will move to the second question posed to the court. In addressing question B, it is important to distinguish it clearly from question A. As previously explained, question A is concerned with the legal consequences arising from the violation by Israel of various international law obligations in the OPT. The second question is of a different nature. Question B focuses on the legal status of the occupation, that is to say, on the illegality of the occupation itself. In this regard, if the court finds that the occupation is unlawful, it necessarily follows that the occupation must come to an end. The conclusion that Israel's occupation of Palestine territory is illegal lies on two grounds. First, there is ample evidence, as we have heard from states' oral presentations during these two days, that the occupation has become an annexation. Second, the cumulative effect of the above-mentioned systematic violations also requires the end of the occupation as the measure needed to effectively protect the rights of the Palestinians. With regard to the legality of an occupation, the test put forward by former Special Rapporteur Link is particularly useful. According to this test, the occupier cannot annex any of the occupied territory. The occupation must be temporary and the occupant must seek to end the occupation and return the territory as soon as reasonably possible. The de jure and de facto annexation of the OPT by Israel contradicts the basic principle of no acquisition of territory by force. In this regard, General Assembly Resolution 2625 establishes that the territory of a state shall not be the object of acquisition by another state resulting from the threat or use of force and that no territorial acquisition resulting from the threat or use of force shall be recognized as legal. The principle of no acquisition of territory by force has been applied by this court in the relation between states with regard to mandated territories and in relation to peoples and the right to sovereignty and integrity of their national territory. This court has recognized that the territorial integrity is a key element for the exercise of the right of self-determination through which peoples freely determines their political status and pursue their economic, social, and cultural development. In fact, the court in the Shaggo's advisory opinion has considered there is an intrinsic link between territorial integrity and self-determination, such that any detachment or annexation, like in this case, by administering power of part of a non-self-governing territory unless, based on the freely expressed and genuine will of the people of the territory concerned, is contrary to the right to self-determination. Occupation is often the result of armed conflict and insofar as one of the main purposes of humanitarian law is to protect the civilian population that lives in areas affected by war, humanitarian law imposes various obligations upon the occupying power, precisely to prevent the violation of their basic rights and the conquest of their territory. In this context, Article 47 of the fourth Geneva Convention contains an absolute prohibition of the annexation of occupied territories. In this case, the intention to annex the territory of the Palestinian people is demonstrated by the fact that the Israeli occupation has already expanded for a period of 56 years with no intention to put an end to it and with no satisfactory explanation as to the relation between occupation and the protection of its citizens. The policy and practice of settlements pursued by Israel since 1967 indicate its intention to claim that its own population has a right to stay permanently on these territories. Similarly, its exploitation of Palestinian natural resources also demonstrates Israel's attempt to exercise sovereign powers over the OPT. As an occupying power, Israel is obligated to act as a temporary administrator on behalf of the protected population and as such, it cannot destroy or appropriate these resources. However, the fact that it has completely sequestered them clearly shows that Israel does not conduct itself as a provisional occupying power. Indeed, by virtue of its actions, including the exploitation of natural resources, the policies of settlements, the erection of the wall, the legalization of outpost, among others, Israel has demonstrated its intention to control indefinitely the OPT. Hence, Israel's occupation has become an annexation. Mr. President, members of the court. Turning now to the cumulative effects of the violation of self-determination, humanitarian law, human rights law, and international criminal law in the OPT, Chile contends that these systematic breaches are also a basis to declare that the occupation is illegal. Again, Special Rapporteur Link's test is useful in this regard. According to this test, the legality of an occupation requires the occupier to act in the best interest of the people under occupation and to administer the occupied territory in good faith, including acting in full compliance with the duties and obligations under international law.
I interrupt you, but we have exceeded the time allocated to Chile. May I invite you to kindly conclude in a minute or two?
Mr. President, if you could, the court give me one more minute. I can finish with the...
Indeed.
Thank you. It is important to clarify that not any violation of international law by an occupying power leads to the conclusion that the occupation must come to an end. As was previously stated, occupation might be the result of an armed conflict and in that context, it is the responsibility of the occupying power to prevent and punish any act in breach of international law undertaken by its armed forces and persons under its control. Insofar as the occupying state fulfills its duty to prevent and punish the individual perpetrators, the violations will not by themselves raise the question of the illegality of the occupation. But in this case, the systematic violation of international law is part of a state policy and then we think that the occupation has become illegal. These rules apply... Sorry. Therefore, during this illegal occupation, the obligations of the occupying power obviously persist despite the fact that this occupation must come to an end. Mr. President, members of the court. With this, I conclude Chile's presentation. Thank you very much.
I thank the delegation of Chile for its presentation, which brings to a close this afternoon's hearing. The court will meet again tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. to hear Colombia, Cuba, Egypt, the United Arab Emirates, and the United States of America. The sitting is adjourned.